Presentation today.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is that Trimbach?
Trimbach.
Yes ma'am. Well, like we've discussed in the last few four meetings event, you know, we've done a lot of research into solar and wind, but solar is one that we've done a lot of research on. We've talked to AEP, the building department, trying to figure out how our bills are derived. You know, a lot of our bills derive on demand factor and that's why we weren't ready for November's meeting because they were still waiting on the final results from AEP on what side of the field they would exactly have put in without too big of a field in. And they're trying to figure out what exactly their, that new demand factor would be with the field that they're proposing. So, this way, because we've actually went through, I don't know, I won a lot for this.
Me too. Oh yeah. And because some of the rules have changed, really, just since we started this conversation a couple of months ago, so, and we'll dig up into the details here in a few minutes. Wanted to talk a little bit about who we are, who Energy Optimizers is, what we've done, how this relationship with Hicksville, Xantle Village School District started. Then we can talk a little bit about solar photovoltaics in general, just what the technology means, how it works, and why look at solar opportunities if you're a school district in Ohio. I know that you've got a neighboring district, actually Antwerp has just implemented a large-scale solar project. In the last six months, we've seen 10 to 15 opportunities really get off the ground here in the state with school districts. So, most, that's the piece that's most important to me tonight, making sure everybody understands why does this make sense? Because when you start to talk about the third option, the financing solutions, you know, the biggest pushback or question we get from school districts is how is this possible? We don't have to pay any money out of pocket, we get this massive solar array, no cost. So, really talking about how that works and why it makes financial sense. So, we are Energy Optimizers USA. We are a turnkey energy services provider. We're headquartered in Tid City, Ohio, just north of Dayton. We've been around since 2009 and we almost exclusively, meaning 97% of the work that we do is with K-12 school districts and local government entities. So, since 2011, we have worked with over 105 school districts in the state of Ohio, including many of your neighbors in the region, mostly providing energy efficiency services. So, for example, our history here with your district and with Eric and Keith particularly, we have implemented two projects with your district since 2014. The first was an exterior LED lighting project. The second, more recently last year, was all of the building interior lighting, and then there was some remaining exterior lighting that we hadn't addressed in the first phase. We are a vendor-neutral company, so, what that means is unlike most energy services companies, we're not tied to any particular product. We don't manufacture anything, we don't represent any particular company. When we design our projects, whether they be energy efficiency or renewable energy, everything we do looks at cost-effectiveness and how we can build on the existing infrastructure. So, just as an example, were we a, you know, also a manufacturer of products, say lighting product, that would mean from a lighting retrofit standpoint, we would be proposing only product that we either rep or manufacture. Our approach, and Eric talked to some of these people in lead-up to that last project, a lot of people would then say rip your whole lighting system out, let's put in all new product or new fixtures. Because we're vendor-neutral, we're always looking at maintaining as much of your system infrastructure as we possibly can, meaning we left your fixtures in place, we only removed those parts that it was cost-effective to remove and only replaced parts that were cost-effective to remove. That cost-effectiveness is the most important question for us. Everything we propose to a school district has to make financial sense. So, everything we do when we design a project, whether it's a lighting project, a full, a comprehensive energy savings project with HVAC, mechanical equipment, everything we do is with the question, what makes financial sense in mind? So, if, if there are opportunities available to your district that involve replacing HVAC equipment, there's life left on that equipment, or that measure would have a simple payback of, you know, 15 years or more, we will always say it's not in your best interest to do that and pull that out of a project. This last point is something that we really pride ourselves on as well as a construction company. I'm sure many of you have had experience with change orders, working with construction firms in the past. We've never issued a change order and we never will. If we design a project and sell a project to a school district and we, it turns out when we get into the project, we've missed something, missed a piece of equipment, or missed an entire wing of your school building with regard to the lighting system, that's on us, we do the work, there's no change order, no additional charge.
And that has happened here?
Yes, that's right. We miss stuff all the time, so, but that's on us.
And we have to care right away and no, no, what's your cost to us?
Yep, that's right. So, when I say that we're the leading provider for K-12 schools in Ohio, I mean, since 2011, we provided more energy savings, energy efficiency and renewable energy projects to school districts in the state of Ohio than any other company. In Ohio, energy savings projects or energy performance contracts are often referred to as house-built 264 projects, that's the financing mechanism. We've implemented 54 house-built 264 projects since 2011. I think at this point, our next closest competitor has implemented 16. We pride ourselves on that and we have, I think I mentioned also, we've implemented a lot of these projects in the region, for example, obviously two projects previously with your district. We just have completed a project with Spencerville Local Schools here in the last 30 days. Crestview Local Schools, we've actually, we created a unique project for Mike Sties and his facilities manager Jeff. At Crestview here, where we've, we did the engineering and design and material procurement and we implemented or installed some of the material, his facilities manager is installing the rest because that was the most cost-effective approach. We also implemented a project in 2012 with Edgerton Local Schools. We're now back working with that district again on a second phase of that energy project.
And last year, you guys did Central Local.
Central Local, absolutely. So, renewable energy considerations. If renewables aren't new, but in the last, you know, five or six years, for both wind and solar energy, those two technologies have just become cost-effective. So, for example, just as an example, with Antwerp, when Antwerp schools approached us a little over a year ago to talk about solar, it's, it still didn't make financial sense, so then we told, you know, we told the district that at the time, it was not, it wasn't something that we were happy to, you know, promote or propose to them. Just in the last year, because of a couple of changes to tax law, it has become cost-effective. So, since that change has occurred, we've started to develop a lot more solar as a company and start to promote it in the school districts. Most of you probably know what solar electricity is or what solar photovoltaics are. It's a very simple system that involves flat panels that when struck with solar irradiance create, knock electrons free and create electricity that can then be harnessed. It's a very simple system. Honestly, it's 95% of the solar system is the panels and the racking. There are a couple of separate components called inverters, which you see right here. An inverter turns that electricity from direct current to alternating current, which is usable by all your technology. So, it's a very simple technology, it's been around actually for a long time, it just, again, has not been a very cost-effective solution. So, when we talk to school districts about solar, we are always trying to make, you know, we're getting a lot of calls right now from districts. There are a number of considerations that have to be taken into account, starting with what room do you have to mount a solar array? You know, most districts do not have the space that Hicksville does in terms of ground. So, in most cases, the only available space is roof mount. You then have to talk about how old that roof is. If you've got a 15, almost 20-year-old roof, that's going to need to be replaced in five to 10 years, it does not make sense to throw a massive solar array on top of it, that's then going to have to be removed. If you have roof issues, if you have roof leaks, you do not want to mount a solar array on top of those issues because maintenance becomes an even bigger problem. If you have ground space, like here at Hicksville, that makes the most sense because you can dedicate the space to it, you don't have to worry about future issues, future construction projects, as long as you're okay with that space being used by the array, that's the ideal that we look for, is enough ground mount space. Even if you have ground space however, you do have to take into consideration, and this is something that we've done in our study, we have to take into consideration any obstructions, meaning things as simple as trees will, can sometimes significantly affect the productivity of the system. The most important consideration is how much electricity your district is paying currently for your power. So, you know, in the state of Ohio, there are a handful of large utility providers and then an even larger number of local municipal or co-op electric providers. If you belong to one of those co-ops or municipal utilities, it's very difficult to get a solar project off the ground because everything relies on your utility provider okaying the system and approving it. Because you're with AEP, for better or for worse, it puts you in a stronger position than most customers in the state of Ohio. AEP is a very cooperative utility. They also normally have higher utility rates than their competition in other parts of the state. So, what we look for when a school district contacts us, expressing interest in solar, is a blended kilowatt hour rate of nine and a half cents or higher. If we look and we see that you're consuming, that you're paying nine and a half, sorry, nine and a half cents or higher, we know there's going to be opportunity for savings, for actual cost savings once you implement the system. We can typically get PPA rates, PPA meaning Power Purchase Agreement rates of equal to or less than nine cents per KWH. After your utility rate, the most important question becomes how large of a system does it make sense to implement? A lot, and Eric will attest to this as well, because he's spoken to a handful of solar providers here over the last four or five months. Most companies, I think, I can say, most companies promote the largest system your building can handle. So, they will look at your total energy consumption, and these are your actual, this is your actual utility data. They will look at this total energy consumption for a 12-month period and size a system to compensate for that full load of power. Because of Ohio's net metering rules, meaning the rules that allow a solar producer to tie to the grid, so to AEP's grid, and to a consumer, like your school building, you will be paid for the power that you do not use, but push back onto the grid, you just will not be paid what that power is at. It's both worth and what you have paid for in producing.
So, it goes back to the power company at New.
About half of what you paid for it. So, if you are paying, if you're paying nine cents, for example, per KWH for every unit of power that's produced by that solar array, every KWH that you push back onto the grid because you're not consuming it, you will then be refunded about half of that, about four and a half cents. So, sizing the system is critically important. This is really what most of our time has been, has been spent on the last 45 days. So, we look at that total consumption, the total consumption for your building, we also look at exactly when you're consuming that power. So, what's your max, what's your peak load? And we try to match up the production of a solar system with the consumption of your building, okay? In order to minimize the amount of over, sorry, in order to minimize the amount of overproduction so that you're not penalized for it. That is a more difficult task for a school building because solar systems are more productive in the summer months. So, your production's up here, that's your peak production for solar. It's also the bottom of your consumption as a building because you're, you're not occupied for the summer. So, you try to find, you try to find that level, you try to find the level of production that minimizes overproduction in those summer months. Does that make sense? The big question, I think I mentioned at the beginning, that we always get is how, how is it that this can make financial sense for anyone? You know, there's, there's this thing called a Power Purchase Agreement. School districts, local governments can take advantage of it. You get a large-scale solar system installed at your facility with no upfront cost. Part of the reason has to do with that, over the last 10 years, 80% drop in prices associated with the material, the labor, that turnkey solution has dropped 80% in price over the last 10 years. Additionally, at the end of 2016, some tax incentives were initiated with the last tax bill that provided hefty incentive for, for investors interested in solar. Now, schools are tax exempt, so they don't mean anything to you. So, part of the conversation that Eric and I have had over the last couple of months is, you know, does it make sense to buy the array or does the Power Purchase Agreement make the most sense? It does not make financial sense unless you can take advantage of the tax incentives. We are not tax exempt, so we can take advantage of those tax incentives. There is currently a 30% investment tax credit, which is taken in the first year. There's also a 50% bonus depreciation in year one, and the, an accelerated depreciation over six, the first six years of the system's life. So, these are huge tax incentives. The owner of the array takes advantage of all these incentives. They also sell the kilowatt hours that are produced to the, to the school district. There are also state renewable energy credits. Now, that SREC number is much lower than it used to be in Ohio, but it's, there's still income associated with those credits. And then the sale of the array. So, all of these things taken together provide a situation where it makes financial sense for an investor and a solar contractor like us to foot the bill, to implement the system, sell the power to the school district, give you the option to buy the system once all of these incentives are exhausted. Yes?
Just so I'm straight, the SREC's are the credits of the unused energy that we're selling back to utility companies?
Separate.
That's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue, correct. So, there's a marketplace for renewable energy credits. It's unrelated to what's produced and pushed back onto the grid. I can send some information, that's follow-up on that.
So typically, the school district would be able to buy the system if we were interested until year seven after all the tax incentives are over?
Correct. And? Yeah, correct.
Would we get take advantage of any of those?
Right. So, unless you're able to take advantage of all the tax incentives, it's, it does not make financial sense to purchase a solar array. Now, on the commercial side of things, you know, our commercial customers, for-profit entities, they're buying solar and taking advantage of all of these benefits and paying cash for their systems. So, the benefit there is if you're a commercial customer, you want to put solar on your building, you take advantage of all of these tax incentives and at the end of the day, after total install costs, you're producing power at around four, four and a half cents per KWH, which is a significant reduction compared to, you know, a 10 cent or 11 cent rate from your utility provider.
And this is also the same reason why a lot of the companies I've talked with, they want a more system impossible. So, if we use 1.8 meg per year, they're proposing a 1.7, 1.75 megawatt system in there because they get all the incentives on how large it is.
Yes.
Also, at the end of seven years or six years, when they get all that tax money back, you know it's overproducing and too big, all of a sudden now you want to buy the array. Well, they have all that capital, all that extra money involved with it, so you're buying a system for twice the amount.
It is, that's right.
I have a question to add to this point, and if you're going to get to this, that's fine. Since we get a tax credit back from the power company, the power we're putting, or not a tax credit, but we're getting paid for the power we're pushing back onto the grid, and that's going to occur mainly in the summertime with our arrangement here, our district arrangement. In the wintertime, when we don't produce as much energy as we're needed, what does that kilowatt cost us to buy back from, from AEP?
You will still be paying the same rate that you're paying now for the power that you would end up purchasing from AEP. That rate will not change. You will just have a, about 70% of the district's power needed, you will be purchasing at a reduced fixed rate. So, no escalation over 20, 25 years. And we'll, yeah, we'll look at how that plays out in terms of that curve. So, I've mentioned this Power Purchase Agreement term a few times so far, without really explaining what it is. The Power Purchase Agreement allows you to, at no upfront cost, have a solar array implemented or installed at your facility. Energy Optimizers USA does all the design and construction work. We own, operate, maintain, and warranty the system. Now, this would be us or the financing company, that, that's really the next step here as we talk through what the, what the term sheet looks like. Either way, Energy Optimizers would warranty the system. The school district agrees to purchase the electricity produced by the solar array. So, you would, you agree to purchase all of the power produced by the system at a set rate, and in your case, without an escalator, that rate is lower than the current electricity rate from the utility company. So, right now, for example, I think your blended is about two, 10.4 cents. Your fixed rate will be eight cents per KWH. 25 years fixed, you have the option after seven years to purchase the system outright in cash at what's called fair market value. So, we've estimated a number based on previous projects like this and fair market value sales that we've seen, it's typically about 50% of the initial cost of the system. You agree to rent the space, which amounts to roughly three acres of land in the rear of the building, for $1 a year. Then, if you choose not to buy the system out after seven years, after the 20, in your case, it's 25 years, after 25 years, it's your system outright with no purchase.
What's the cost of the system upfront?
We've not, we've not looked at a cash, we've not really looked at the...
For a market value, around 570,000?
Yeah, it's a little over a million. I think we were at a dollar sixty per watt.
So, I'm just trying to figure out what that 50% would be.
The 50% would be, and it's actually in your packet here, so if you look at this one-page proposal that's here for... If you look on the left-hand side, that's financials box, just below the optional fair market value line, there's a project buyout cost of 570, 970. So, the, if you wanted to purchase the system outright in cash, it would be twice that right now. That's the value of the system. So, just over a million dollars.
So, after 25 years, it's still worth 50% of its initiation value?
After seven years, it's still worth, yes, it's still worth 50%.
Can you go into detail on the ranking?
Sure. So, the next step after the board approves a project like this, there's, there's a Power Purchase Agreement term sheet actually that has just been shared with Eric to review, which is more of an abbreviated agreement. It, and it talks, it goes into a little bit of detail about what that looks like, but part of the Power Purchase Agreement, you know, the full-life agreement, there's, there's leasing, land leasing language in there, a lot of language about insurance, but it's built, it's just built in for a dollar a year, you agree to lease the land, you know, the three, it's just, just a tiny bit over three acres.
Who carries the liability on that?
The PPA owner. So, all of the liability, all of the insurance associated with the system, all of that is carried by the Power Purchase Agreement holder, the owner of the system.
And if they back out?
So, you mean down the road?
Yeah.
So, built in also to the Power Purchase Agreement, built into the insurance package is insurance that covers the district in case that company, you know, goes out of business, gets bankrupt. If anything happens, there are clauses built into the Power Purchase Agreement and insurance to protect the district.
I think we want our attorney to look at it more strongly. And he had sent that term sheet to me, I think he had sent along to you guys. You guys had recommended having our attorney come over and look over it.
We actually recommend you having, you know, having your legal look at it, and if your legal has any experience with power purchase agreements, or if they know a neighboring district that does, try to get their power purchase agreement and you, you know, you give that to us, we'll share it with the financing company. The financing company that we've worked with the most and that we've been working with on your project is called New Resource Solutions. They are an Athens, Ohio-based company. They've been a great company to work with, they have a lot of experience in solar, they also were able to get us an eight-cent fixed rate for Hicksville, which to be honest, is almost unheard of. Just, I don't think we've maybe seen one PPA that had a fixed rate for 25 years. Best-case scenario is normally 1.5% annual escalator, so really strong package, really strong field.
What's, what do they do? Craig?
The eight percent is locked in for 25 years.
Eight cents per, that's right, eight cents per KWH.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eight cents, sorry. Fixed for 25 years.
And where are we at right now?
Right now, we're at 10.4 cents blended. But right now, right now, we have AEP rate, and they have base and riders on there, and we also have Champion, who I have a contract with for three years, ends June 2020. Champion, they have a contract too, where, you know, that they base your rate on what you consume. I've talked with them, and they've also, so they've worked with the school district, you know, we're tax exempt, and they will actually, they would raise the rate from 4.834 cents a kilowatt, up to five point...
We rounded, didn't we, yeah?
Five, yeah, five point, 5.334 is what they would raise it to. And they would have a new contract to, or to end in June 2020, but they'd be willing to work with us because they don't have to. But they have the right to, you know, they assume that we, for we use 2 meg per year, they can get that much money out of us. But they emailed and said that they'd work with us and all they want to do is bump that rate and offset some of their losses, I guess, but that's still better than what most people around here are paying. I've talked to a lot of schools, they're paying nine cents for their party, they're locked in at nine cents.
Yes.
And they think that's a good rate.
Would say it would, you know, or they're dealing, or there's another school over that direction.
For solar?
Yeah.
Solar, I want to say Amworth actually is at seven and a half cents.
With escalator.
With an escalator.
Okay, so it's going to go...
100% certain of theirs, I honestly believe Amworth's too large for system, and they put a one point, they, they use 1.303 meg per year, and they put like 1.3 meg system in, and for overproducing, and if they want to buy it out at the end of seven years, all the schools I've talked with, schools that they've done already before solar projects, everyone I've spoken to in Indiana, Michigan, they say as soon as you buy the solar, they highly recommend it. You do take on the responsibility and the maintenance, we've discussed that, you know, almost like having a maintenance company come in here twice a year and service all of your heat and air conditioning equipment. There's companies out there that do that, they come out and serve us. There's companies out there that do that, they come out and service, you know, the solar field. They also recommend, and they take care of all that cost while you're under the PPA. But solar, you know, we have fields around us. They get dusty, covered, you know, rain, spon, everything else, they're not as efficient. So they recommend having the panels cleaned at least once a year. During the PPA time, they cover all that cost. But if we buy the system after year seven, then we would want to hire that out to have done at least once a year, make sure all the panels are clean, clear of any kind of debris, and that they're producing that, you know, the highest rate they could possibly produce at.
So, the district she spoke with that purchased their systems after seven years, twofold question. What's the longest period that someone's over their system?
Probably two years. That they loaned it on their own. There are schools, well, most of the schools in Indiana, they're actually buying it upfront. And I'm not sure the reason why Indiana, Ohio is a lot different.
I don't either.
Most of theirs are getting loans from the bank for one and a half, two million dollars. They say that they're looking at a 15-year payback. And then they're looking at, you know, the upfront 15-year payback, and then years 15 to year 25, or 30, 35, hard along the panels last, has all the positive cash flow. So they're buying their system upfront.
I'm wondering if it's not because average KWH rates are just higher in Indiana?
I'm not sure.
That may be. I've not heard that, Eric.
Most of the schools I've talked to in Indiana, they're buying them upfront.
Yeah, and we, you know, we've, we look at that regularly. And we've looked at it closely with Eric. In Ohio, you know, get, again, back to the cost-effectiveness. It's got to make financial sense. And, I mean, we couldn't make sense of that upfront purchase of this system for Hicksville because it's not just, you know, that large capital purchase. It's also taking on the maintenance, taking on everything else for a new system that you're not familiar with yet. Knowing that if you just wait seven years, you know, see how the system functions.
Do you buy it a lot cheaper?
You can buy it a lot cheaper, yeah.
They get the money for the tax incentives, which we can't take advantage of.
That's right. Yeah, that's unusual. I've not, I've not seen anybody anywhere that's a nonprofit entity purchase a solar system outright unless it was, you know, unless there was specific fundraising performed solely to purchase the system. Because it really is, you know, back to, back to this piece. This right here, even though over the last 10 years, 80% reduction in price, it's still expensive. Again, this system here, over a million dollars. Without these, when you start talking in terms of return on investment and simple payback, I mean, we see 15 years probably is about right, actually. That's about what we would see. Closer to 20 for this size system. So without those, I mean, that's something that we just do, we don't propose or recommend to a district. Let somebody else take advantage of these, make it cost-effective. At the end of the day, your KWH rate is much lower than what you're paying now, and it's fixed. So, the predictability, the stability and predictability of your electricity rate for, you know, a certain percentage of the power this building is going to consume, you now know exactly what you're going to pay for that versus a historical escalation of conservatively 3% a year from AEP or any other utility.
Do you have another question?
Any questions? Yeah, 4.5 cents kilowatt now for what we push back onto the grid. Is that locked in for the 25 years to that cost? Or is that, or is that a variable?
It's part, it's, it's a variable. It's a good question. But it's part of Public Utilities Commission of Ohio rulings on that metering. So, I mean, that could change. It's a good question. It's a variable, absolutely. So, when we looked at the pro forma for the system, you know, there, I mean, we spell out our assumptions here at the bottom. You know, there are certain variables that are out of our control.
One of the concerns that I have is that more, as more of these go back in, that that price that you're able to sell the kilowatt, that power back, what they can push back onto the grid is going to decrease in value over time.
It's a good concern. It is. I mean, we don't know. We also, I mean, we know that there's a lot, that utility companies are not very happy about all the solar that's popping up everywhere. And in some states, the fight's been, that battle has been louder and stronger. At the same time, being an AEP customer here, you know, in Ohio, AEP is the largest solar producer in the state. They have played a lot more friendly than any of the, than the First Energy, for example, in the northeast part of the state. But you're right, these are variables. I mean, there are things that can change from the utility provider.
Sure. With reference to that money going back, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought the power that goes back to the grid, the money that's generated there is going back to the person that's running this, not us.
No, it's a good question, and it's probably confusing. So, the system, you have a PPA. There's a, there's a system owner, a PPA holder, right, that you contract with. Your agreement is that you will purchase all of the kilowatt hours of power produced by that system for eight cents, right? So, you're producing power all day and consuming a bunch of it. Summertime comes, or odd hours during the day where the system's producing more than the building's consuming, and you start kicking KWH back onto the grid. You have purchased that power for eight cents, right, from the PPA holder. You're giving it to AEP. AEP is crediting you with that. It's just not for that full amount. It's not for the full amount that you're paying.
I'm with you.
Both, and you're actually paying AEP and Champion. So, because Ohio's a deregulated utility market, you have distribution and supply separate. So, what you got, what Eric's done is negotiated a really strong supply rate. You're for...
4.834 is the generation rate.
Yeah.
You're also transmission, distribution, and customer charge.
Yeah, so when we talk about your blended rate being 10.4 cents, that's all in. That's both AEP and Champion, that's all the tariffs. That's anything associated with distribution, that's your peak demand charge, that's everything, which is the equivalent of the eight cents all in from the solar.
Good. How often are we expecting to go over? Because we're going over a lot.
Correct.
And should this system be a little smaller?
And that's what we've done. That's, that's the most important question. So, again, what's the KWH rate the district is paying now? We want to see a number at least at nine and a half cents blended. The second biggest question is, okay, let's look at the consumption curve throughout the year. So, it's actually the opposite. You've got high consumption, January, February, March, April. You start to ease into summer, July is your lowest consumption month. You have the opposite curve from solar in Ohio, where it's producing less, January, February, March. As you get into summer, it's producing more. So, trying to line those two curves up to minimize how much you're ever going to get back to the grid is how we arrived at a system size of 718 KW. If you remember what Eric was saying, some, you know, the neighboring district in Anchorage, and we see this a lot, this was our first compensation. That's the most critical question. Because you're going to be buying that power at eight cents and then being refunded four and a half cents for it. So, neighboring district with Anchorage is over a meg, right?
1.3.
1.3 megawatts, so almost twice the size of the system that we're recommending for Hicksville.
I've done quite a bit of research on this, and I appreciate your honesty on that. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm following too, is that, is that you don't want them oversized.
Oh, yeah.
If you do it, you don't want it oversized.
That's right.
Yeah, I had two proposals from different companies. And one of them, their system was going to produce 1.9 meg. And we don't even use that much a year. Another one was 1.752 meg. And, you know, this one's just right at a meg, and we used, you know, 1.8, 1.9, you know, over the last few years. So this is about half of our electrical consumption.
Yep. Yeah, and we wish it wasn't that way. I mean, it would make, it would make better sense if, you know, it's an unfortunate circumstance with regard to school buildings, that when you're occupied and when you're consuming, that that curve doesn't overlap. But, you know, being open, honest, transparent about it, that's our job. And that's what we've been working through. Any others? Questions? So, some other reasons. Now, obviously, the financials should drive your decision. I mean, it is a financial decision that the district is making. There are a lot of other benefits, particularly for schools. And the one that Energy Optimizers has latched on to and been the most excited about is the renewable energy-based programming. We have a very strong energy education program that we build into all of our energy efficiency projects. We're excited to be able to build in similar programming to our renewable projects. Part of that includes an energy dashboard being installed in a visible comments area in the district or in the building. So, you know, not quite as big as this screen, but a nice flat-screen television, visible production, system production data shown. And you can use that dashboard to promote any other energy efficiency projects you've implemented. But we can do really cool things with the dashboard, like tie that day's solar production to how much of your lighting system, for example, is being compensated for by that solar production. We also have developed and implemented some renewable and energy efficiency curriculum in about 22 school districts around the state. So if that's something Hicksville's interested in, we love, we love that. We love to hear that interest. The stable and predictable portion of your utility spend, this is the one thing that customers repeatedly point to as the biggest benefit. That we know for a fact exactly how much we're going to be spending for KWH for X number of years, particularly with the fixed rate deal that comes with this PPA. Obviously, significant public relations for the district, reduced electricity costs. This is a newer benefit that's really starting to emerge now that there's been more research. The power isn't just clean, you know, it's always referred to as clean power. It's not just clean in the sense of sustainability. It's actually a higher quality electricity. I don't, Eric, you've never really talked about dirty power in Hicksville. We run into a lot of school districts that have power factor issues where the power's just dirty. It actually does a lot of damage over time to, you know, to motors and compressors and things like that, where you don't have a steady flow, steady voltage, steady amperage.
I was going to ask you, but since it is inverters?
Yes.
That were converted back, they're generating harmonics. You don't have issues with harmonics going back onto the power company to create that load factor?
No, no, not at all. So, cleaner power, cleaner power. Eric mentioned, he spoke into a couple of other districts that we've worked with here over the last two or three years. One of our first solar projects was with Kettering Middle School, or Kettering City School District, which is about 10 miles south of us in Tip City. We installed 150 KW array under Middle School in September 2017. So, a couple months old data. We had 16,496.7 KWH production, which was actually 320 KWH higher than what had been predicted by the model. System's performing well, and, you know, I recommended that Eric reach out and talk to the district.
It's like with Phil Harker, with Kettering. And everything that they've ever, pretty much everyone I've actually spoken with, and they've had a solar field put in. Every school district has saved as much, if not more, than what they projected. And they've always produced as much as they said they'd produce or more.
Yeah.
Have you talked to them about the roof panel version versus a land-based version? Or do you guys have a preference, one way or the other?
We like the ground.
I mean, I understand.
Yeah, if you have...
I never lost work because I've had so many roof plates here in the building. I never wanted to consider that.
I appreciate it. The only issue of concern is that the field, if we would do this, the field gets located... I mean, in the proposal, I know it's just, you know, a section of land shows it. But it landlocks from any possible future expansion. If we looked at it so that we push it back far enough so it wouldn't fall, I would hate to hand-tie future boards for 25 years because we landlocked.
And we didn't speak about putting it as far back southwest corner as possible.
So I just, yeah, that's the reason the roof question came up. But I understand fully where you're coming from.
And the roof, I mean, the roof, I say that we like looking at ground. The only reason we like the ground is because of roof issues. I mean, it...
It's a lot easier to maintain than everything.
Yes, it's a lot easier to maintain. But in terms of cost, it's less expensive to install a roof mount system. You have a lot shorter runs to your, to your power mains in the building. As long as you can come through the roof, as long as the roof is in good condition, you can go in. And you have roof space that's facing the right direction. It's a more cost-effective install, but from a maintenance standpoint.
We probably wouldn't have enough, think about it, we probably don't have enough roof square footage to take care of the...
That's right.
This kilowatt system.
That's right.
So that would eliminate it anyway.
What you end up doing when you do a roof mount is, you know, you have your prime roof space, which is the south-facing roof. Then you end up putting solar everywhere else, including north-facing roof space. And you then, you've installed panels that are producing 1,400 KWH per panel on the south-facing. And you get down to 700, or half that much production on that north-facing roof. So you've paid just as much money for half as productive a system on that part of the building.
Are these fixed model units that are they rotating?
Actually, we're doing something different than all the other schools around here. This is actually a tracking system.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, we're really down west a lot. And I spoke to all the companies about, you know, I had a lot of interest in tracking system. You have less acres you take up. But, you know, it starts off in the east, it tracks with the sun to the west, so you're getting the most.
Yeah, so to the, to the space question and the sizing question, we first started looking at that fixed tilt system, so just on racking, it's fixed. For the production that we've arrived at, it was going to require 764 KW. When we shifted that design to the single-axis tracking, which follows the sun, we were able to drop from 764 to 718. Just as much production, that many fewer panels, that much less cost.
Does that have a vertical and horizontal tracking system? So that, so that the curvature of the sun during the summer months, lower in the sky, does it also rotate? In other words, not only does it track this way, but it tracks this way?
No.
Okay, so it's strictly?
Yep, just single, yeah, yeah. That would be dual axis, yep, absolutely. Another project case study. This was implemented as part of, actually, as part of a house-built 264 project with Adams County Schools down in the southern part of the state. Involved large HVAC upgrades, building automation, controls, lighting, and then a solar array. They actually decided to purchase this and built it into their house-built 264 project. We did not recommend it to them. It was a decision that the community made, that they wanted to own the system outright. It's actually a total of 535 KW, but with smaller systems spread around the district at five different locations. Very productive system at 64,264 KWH here just this past September. It's also a combination of roof and ground mount, depending on the space that is available to the district, to each individual building. I think I've probably said all of this stuff at this point, but these are the details. This is what myself, our engineering team, Eric, this is what we've arrived at as what we think makes the most financial sense for Hicksville. It's a 718.2 KW array, so much smaller than within a meg or even the 764 with the fixed tilt. We are projecting 1,011,150 KWH year one. Now, there is degradation over the life of the system. So, all of the modules, and that's all tier-one products. That refers to a Bloomberg Financable List. So, like anything, like LED lighting, there's a ton of LED out there. There's a ton of solar out there. There's a whole lot of junk solar. There's high-quality solar. When we refer to tier-one, we mean it's actually listed on Bloomberg's Financable List. So a company will actually put money behind it and invest in it. The 25-year module warranty covers, it covers every module against defect. But that also means that at 25 years, the system will still be producing 80% of its initial output. That's part of what that warranty means. Now, now that solar arrays have been operating for, you know, several decades, we're finding, and what they're finding, what manufacturers are finding, is that that 80% number is really low. They're, they're finding pretty consistently closer to... They're finding pretty consistently closer to 92, 93%. Output maintained at 25 years. There are some systems that, there's a system up near Cleveland that's been operating for 35 years still. So unless damage is done, because there aren't a lot of moving parts, unless real physical damage is done to the system that keeps producing electricity.
Again, part of this is for Eric. Do we have to go that close to the school?
No, it's coming down, I just couldn't fit the whole. I wanted to show both.
All right, well, because it's extending out quite a ways to the right, to the north, I guess. If we're gonna do a field house, I guess the other issue is that gonna run into any issues if we ever had to do any digging for the geothermal?
No.
Okay, that's how it declared?
And especially if we shift it down.
Okay, and we'll have room for a road potentially if we ever want to put one through?
Yeah, the roads actually, actually, the easement we have or the property we own there, you actually drive down this main drive to the, we're dead end pretty much, then you'd have to go to the edge of the pond and then you had to curl around the pond a little bit, the retention pond, and then you go straight out. It's not straight across there, the property we have to 18.
Okay, the electrical comes in back here by the kitchen area?
Yeah, right now, right now the electrical comes in, or here's the electrical.
Right, right, so is it possible that if the field sets down here, that we bring the power in around here so if we do expansion, you know, I know these buildings might be in the way, we don't know what's gonna happen 20 years from now.
I know there's full box electric over here and I know right now we have electric running over here.
Just so that doesn't heavily move if we had to do major expansions somewhere down.
Right, and the spot where it can be the least restrictive to any, because that's, to me, is one of the biggest things is 25 years, you can sit there.
Yes, I agree completely. Those consider, the future use of the land, those considerations are critical. I mean, that's what the conversation, once everybody understands and agrees that, hey, this is a good thing for us to pursue, then the due diligence, digging into the term sheet, the power purchase agreement, that legal language, and the logistics. Where exactly is this going to be located? Drawing that out in the field, understanding, I mean, the only thing really set in stone is that it does need to be back here behind the building because the electrical main is there. Other than that, you know, this is where you want to get flexible and really think, what are other plans that the district has talked about in recent years? Future building, other use of this space? Because where you said it, you want it to be able to sit for 25 years.
Who's responsible for the maintenance of the ground since we leased, since the land would be leased to your company? Who's responsible for the spraying, the weed control?
The PPA holder, yes, the owner of the system. Not you unless you want or unless you want.
What if, let's say they don't come out, the weeds are getting tall, we keep calling, what kind of recourse do we have in that event?
Well, you call me, I mean, you call us, we take that very serious and Eric will attest to that. One thing I do want to point out is it is in the owner's best interest to have this system fully operational and as productive as possible every day. Because you're buying every, not just what you're using, remember, every KWH that the system produces, you're purchasing, so they want to make as much of it as possible. If this gets overgrown, if they get dirty, if you have, you know, a hailstorm and panels get damaged, then they're not making their money. So it's in their best interest to have this system as operational.
It takes a lot of insurance, but what if these aren't damaged? What's the, is there hazardous material in the disposal of these or is everything, is that no more?
Right, no hazardous material. And I talked a couple of slides ago, one of those benefits being the dashboard system, right? So that's the cool part for the district, for the students, the community, the staff, that that's visible here. That dashboard is in place because all of the monitoring infrastructure is also installed with the system. So the productivity of it or consumption is all sent to the company that owns the PPA or owns the array. So they know when any of these are not functioning. They know, you know, if this strand, if something would blow onto it and cover these, you know, these 15 panels up, they know that that's the case because it'll alert them that, hey, this row, these modules aren't as productive. They're 20% productive, whatever that is. So this whole system is communicating back to that owner all the time and that's bottom line.
Snow, snow piles up on there, who's responsible to come in, you know, I know they're black.
They melt, yeah, that's actually the most common question up again. It melts pretty quick. But again, they want that system to be as productive as possible.
And is there a timeframe, so if something breaks down, something goes bad, Eric's looking at the panel, and it's low, he's calling them up. Is there a timeframe written in the contract that says you have to be out within?
That's a good question. If there's not, that's a consideration that we want to build in and when we mentioned at the beginning, if you wanted to talk to Antwerp about how their legal drew up their PPA and recommend a power purchase agreement to us and to New Resource Solutions, I'll make sure that there's at least clear language in there.
Actually, schools actually have their legal council actually draft up their own PPA agreement and give it to them to oversee and they, you know, or any, I guess wasn't you guys that did this anymore, but they give it to their solar provider for them to agree to it, so.
Yeah, and I would think there'd need to be something, there was some type of repercussion. If it's not fixed in within a certain number of days, then.
I agree, there should be some sort of exchange where you're, you earn credits or something.
Yeah, so if they don't come out and fix it, you know, well.
I agree, actually.
Eric, I'd also be interested in the school districts that have purchased theirs, what's their, I know it's a short window of timeframe, but what's their average overhead expense? Insurance, maintenance, everything. I mean, obviously they're saying they're happy with it, so it's got tons pulled out. What is, what do they think that this payback is by owning it?
I'd ask that question too, because the only question I asked was what kind of maintenance they had, he said earlier, you haven't had any maintenance doing anything other than, they hire a company to come home and clean them once a year.
Just wondering what the insurance rate is and stuff like that, go ahead and think. You got a million dollars worth of.
Asset.
Of asset, then you gotta cover on hail, hail damage, but we do get hail through here periodically?
I'll find that out too, the insurance piece.
And I would assume it's not light hail that caused the problem, it's the heavy stuff.
That's right. To the maintenance, this was a question Eric had last week when we talked, typical maintenance costs or service contracts. So for that annual cleaning and maintenance agreement, the standard cost is about a penny a watt. So you've got 718,000 watts, $7,180, which is typically what you're looking at. So 25-year power purchase agreement, eight cents per KWH, zero escalation. That year eight system buyout option at fair market value, again, to be determined at year eight. Does anybody have any questions about the power purchase agreement, how that's structured? These have all been great questions, particularly the maintenance piece, because we do promote buying the system at year eight, we do think it makes financial sense. But those are the costs that you pick up. You pick up the insurance piece, you pick up the maintenance costs. Anything else? We've covered everything that you and I've gone through.
So after eight years, eight years rolls around, Eric comes to us and says, hey, you know what? I think we should consider buying it. You know, is that something where you come back out and we have another discussion or is that just something that Eric takes care of?
Yeah, we would, I'm more than happy to help facilitate that at the time. You know, you'll have, you would have options. Unlike most purchases, well, you could do, you know, you could use a house-built 264. You could, if you just have the cash, you could just buy the system outright. So there are a number of financing options available to school districts if you just don't have the cash for it. But yeah, call us and we'll be in touch, yeah. Year eight, call us, we'll figure out how you navigate that and help determine what that fair market value is. And that's what we see our primary role here as, is vetting the manufacturers, vetting the finance, I mean, we've talked to a large number of people, manufacturers, installation companies, financing firms here over the last 60 days, trying to get this right here, this eight cents, zero escalation, 25-year, allowing this, this buyout option, because this, that's not always built into the system. Most financing companies, they want you to stick 25 years, eight cents. They want to see more of that return. But yeah, I mean, after year seven, if that's something that you guys are interested in, then we'd love to work with you just to make sure that what's being determined as fair market value is actually what we're seeing in the marketplace as fair market value for the system.
I think the system is sized correctly with what research I've done. I think the two big unknowns or the two issues is that we don't put it in a place, if we do it, if we don't put it in a place that handicaps this for future growth, kilowatts or decrease in value, you still probably get a good chance you offset that by the lack of increase of eight cents a kilowatt.
You're avoiding that market escalation of utility cost.
I'm just trying to think of, in their wisdom, of the politicians of anything being, you know, changing the game plan partway through, it's 25 years long period of time or something to stay the course, I guess. If somebody changes the rules, the regulations.
I agree.
Changes the whole game that you looked at, it's good today, but maybe not five years from now.
That's the big reason that we spent the first eight years of our company really telling school districts not to invest in solar, not to even consider it, because it didn't make sense and there was too much volatility at the time in the market. I mean, that 80% reduction in price over 10 years, that's real, that's not an exaggeration. That's how rapidly this technology has developed and become cost-effective. But I agree completely, I mean, 25 years is a long time. This is not a five-year system, for example, where modifications to net metering or any other utility laws can change that drastically.
Looking at kind of the payback.
Yep, the pro forma.
Yeah, why the loss in year one?
The big thing is, right now, most of our election bills are derived by or pushed by our demand factor, which is 530.4. Well, that's a 12-month period that they look at your utility bill. And so we're set at 530.4 and so 12 months later. And so for us to be able to drop our demand rate, it's usually, it's gonna take that first whole year to offset it. My AEP, I actually, I sent them a spreadsheet from the billing department. So I was on the phone with billing department many, many, many times and went through our bill and he had me get up all the bills for a year. He goes, it's called an OPR rate form and he goes, put in all your, these numbers off your utility bill, and I did it. He goes, okay, now hit calculate, go to this page, and it shows down to like 75 cents off what we paid AEP portion. So, okay, it was 164,400 kilowatts we used that month. So, okay, act like you use 100% solar. How much would your bill drop? Went back in, I put zero for the electricity we used from AEP. So we went from $8,663 to like $67.91. So for using no electricity from the grid, we're only saving $2,000. Well, because our, most of our bills derive from that power fat or our demand factor 530.4. Well, after 12 months and it's gonna actually lose money, it's gonna cost us more money in the first year, but then our new demand rate will get set. And after that, then we start entering those numbers and then you start saving more money and saving more money and then as your, the rates, this is factored on the 3% escalation rate by AEP for those cost savings. And that's pretty, over the last 10 years, that's 3, 3.5% from AEP, so. But that's why the very first year of all lose money, because it takes 12 months to actually.
Reset your demand, your peak demand, which, they're not, not all utility companies are that, are set up that way or structured that way. For example, Duke's peak demand charge does not make up that large a portion of a utility bill. So to be honest, for me, it shocked me how much it was when Eric sent over that document and that's what forced us to dig in and assume that. And it also then forced us to request your interval data. So we, the chart I showed earlier that showed 12 months and your total KWH consumption, there's actually a report you can get from AEP called your interval data. And it's a every 30 minutes of consumption over the last 12 months. 30-minute screenshot of what you're consuming. So then we had to go in and line up the interval data from AEP, so every 30 minutes, against the projected interval data for this solar array right here in this location, what its productivity would be. It's a much deeper granular dive into the system financials. Then we were able to understand what your peak demand will be once that resets after the first year, because we know exactly how both are gonna overlap. When exact, not just that you're consuming 164,000 KWH, but exactly when in a month's period, you're consuming each of those units. And I gotta tell you, guys, you have an efficient building here.
It's very efficient. And I have all the interval data, they talk about the 30-minute window, I guess I'll copy this. And he emailed me saying, you know, if we could change the time for when you're using so much electricity. He said, because in the months of December, January, February, March, he goes, and April, it's 8 o'clock in the mornings usually when he uses the most, and he said, that's not typical for a normal school district. Well, those are heaty months. Well, I told him we're 100% geothermal and at 8 o'clock, that's when early in the building is up running for the first time. You know, I stagger all the air fishing, 30 minutes for all four zones, the whole building and have our set points. You can ask them, they think they're awesome.
Why stagger?
Yeah, but then I even went back in and looked at all the days and what temperature it was the night before and what days it landed on. And some of those months was, it was the warmest day of the month or the night before was the coolest day of the month, negative one degrees and, you know, most of, I thought possibly that they all have the Mondays after a long weekend, trying to keep the building up. There's only two Mondays and it had to do with, the day before was negative one degrees and the other one was 91 degrees.
What more you could do to stagger, to eliminate, you're gonna have, I mean, you're just gonna, they're gonna hit you on the highest one.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
No matter what they're gonna hit you.
And he knows, we had another company that does energy efficiency too, Plug Smart, they came in a couple of years ago and they, they were the first school that they weren't able to find. And they went through all the controls and everything else, they couldn't find, first school, they couldn't find anything to make us save more money. The only thing they recommended was felt around the doors and LED interior lighting, but it did have less than one and a half year payback. And we've done both, put all new door sleeves, put all new felt, we had all new LED lighting put in, and so this was an excellent example of taking district money.
That's a good point, I did, I did not point out is that, you know, I talked about what we're looking for, how you know solar makes sense for you. Normally, our first conversation with the school district is, you don't even want to talk about solar because you can't size the system until you're as efficient as you can, as you can be. So the last thing we would want to do, say, is come in and say, okay, Hicksville, you want to put a 718.2 KW array in, that's gonna, that's going to provide X percentage of your total load and then next year, then you install LED. So then your total load drops, now you're really overproducing and kicking back onto the grid. You really don't want to look at any renewables, solar or wind, until you're as efficient a building as you can be. Otherwise, down the road, when you make those efficiency steps, you've now started overproducing even more and being penalized basically by the utility company. And you guys have done everything that's pretty efficient here.
I got, I've been asking a ton of questions.
That's good.
If I get two more, then I'm done. But 25 years and at that point in time, we own it.
You own it.
What if we say, you know what, we don't want it? Come get it.
That's a really good question. That's a good question. I mean, I'm sure.
Because I know we've looked at several different ones and one of them, they would come at 25 years, if we were, they come, they tear it out, it was theirs.
This is if you ran the whole thing right out.
Yeah.
Like I say, every company I've talked to, again, in 25 years, they would remove the system at no cost to the district at 25-year point.
That's what I remember here too and I didn't, and I guess, and then my last question was, if we said, you know, over the course of the next month or so, whatever, that something we want to pursue, what would be the projected next summer, next spring, next fall? Sure.
While you're looking that up, one of the guys that I asked that question of at the end, he said. While you're looking at it, one of the guys that I asked that question of at the end, he said, for the most part, scrap value of the system pays for what it's for.
Yep, exactly.
On the bottom of the information, the bottom of this would be here.
The next step-
I was told, if you size the system correctly, the scrap value of the product that's there pretty much pays for removal of the system. And then that led to the question, is the hazard based in conjunction with that? And I've had, he said no, Doug said no, and the other gentleman, I spoke with Duke said no, there's no. So, so I think, you know, I was concerned wanting to create, but I just, this week, I'm lost, so. So I, doesn't seem, doesn't appear to be a concern.
Yeah. So to next steps and timeline, so we are here reviewing the opportunity and benefits. I have also shared, I mentioned the term sheet with Eric, we shared it with Keith. We, the next step, so between now and a board approval, say in January, we would want you guys to review that term sheet. If you're okay with that higher level overview of the term sheet, then I will request from NRS a full power purchase agreement for legal review. Everybody reviews that stuff, there's a lot of questions and answers, adjustments being made to it. You are shaping it to a power purchase agreement that you can live with for twenty-five years. Board, board review and approval in January. Over the next two months, there's a whole lot of final engineering, there's soil testing, all the permits and approvals are acquired locally, with a view to getting this interconnection agreement from AEP. So I mentioned early on that if you have a municipal utility provider or you're a part of a co-op, implementing solar is very difficult. I mean, it's really at the discretion of the utility provider. So most small municipals just say, no, we don't allow it. The big guys do, AEP, First Energy, but it requires this interconnection agreement. So you've got two months of detailed engineering, review of the site, review of the plans. And then normally within sixty days, we get an interconnection agreement in place. Then there's a material procurement process, which takes a couple of months. With it being a ground mount, I mean, it's possible to start before school is out. If you wanted to do that, that would be, would be possible. We think it makes more sense to have it be a summer project. So right when school gets out, get in, start implementing, and it's up and running, fully up and running by the time school comes back in the fall.
When is the demand factor? When, when does AEP look at that? Is that renewed at the end of the year, fiscal year, or end of year or how?
End of year.
Or when do they-
Calendar year.
So, so we really, really let it run in six months-
Yes.
On that demand factor. So is that factored into your other sheet?
Yes, you'd be running on that. So it, they're gonna constantly be taking, right? They're gonna constantly be reading the demand, but it won't, they won't start looking again to reset it until January.
Okay, so essentially, yeah, we're less than six months, however I need before we got reset.
So be in June, we're not gonna affect the amount of money we're gonna lose? That's, that, well, for whatever it was, twelve hundred bucks is an accurate measure?
Say that again?
Well, this expected twelve hundred thirty-two dollar loss. That's assuming the system is up, up and running in August, or is that January first?
That's assuming it's up and running in August.
They did all their numbers.
Yep, yeah, perfect.
Yeah. So that's the timeline. It is honestly, there's a lot of, the more, the most complicated aspect to solar is all of the utility stuff. So the interconnection agreement, really deep dive understanding your utility rate analysis, what your demand charge is. It's the billing aspect that's complicated. The technology itself is extremely simple. I mean, it's really as simple as some racking. In your case, with the single-axis tracker, you've got a little bit of a motor in there. The panel, wires, wire connector and inverters, it's that simple. Um, the, all the other stuff is what takes forever. And you wanna make sure that you understand, because, you know, I'm sure Eric has seen it over the last few months. If you don't understand the demand piece, if you don't understand the need to look at, um, your, the interval data, if you just look, and you don't understand supplier and distributor, if you would just look at, hey, I'm paying ten point four cents right now blended, I'm gonna be paying eight cents. And the difference between those for how much electricity is being produced, that savings number is gonna look very attractive, it's just not realistic. So we wanna make sure that we paint a very realistic picture. Um, you know, we're conservative in all of our estimates on the renewable side, as well as on the, uh, the energy efficiency side. I think if you talk to any of our customers, you'll find that, uh, there's pleasantly surprised school districts out there. We want, uh, you know, we want you to always end up saving more than what we project. That's our commitment. This is, I know I talked a lot about it at the beginning, the cost-effective solution, that is really what drives everything that we do. It does not make financial sense. If, if it's not something that me, anybody I work with would say, for our own home school district, this is something I want my tax dollars going to, then we won't propose it to. We'll tell you about it, we'll let you know it's an option, but if it's not cost-effective, we're not gonna promote it.
I can say that, 'cause I spoke with them back and we did exterior lighting and-
Oh, yeah.
It's not, it's not what we're doing right now. We waited a couple of years. We waited a couple of years and I asked about interior lighting and, you know, it was not-
That's true.
Waited a couple more years and I reached out to him, he said, yeah, but I'm actually thinking about you. It's finally hit the mark, or it's, it's cost-effective now. We put vending mowers on everything, and then window cubes on our walk-in floor and-
Yeah. You guys have done it right here. It's an efficient building, very. Um, I hope that helps. We've learned a lot of information, yeah. I know it's, and it does, honestly, it gets super complicated. We could deep dive the, the utility numbers. I do want you all to know that Eric has, Eric spent a lot of time with me and with our, our solar engineer at the office on the phone, you know, looking at spreadsheets together, making sure that he understands this, that we fully understand it, and really trying to carve out a solar array that really does make sense. So, you know, you can also design a system that's too small, where, you know, what's the point of taking up that space out there if we're only gonna produce ten percent of the power that we need, right? You could go that route. Districts, some districts do do that, but it's almost entirely for the educational benefit of it. So we're seeing that quite a bit with career tech centers. We've got, uh, the next board meeting I have here is next week with Portage Lakes Career Center up near Akron. That's almost wholly driven by the, the educational element, the curricular element for their CTC students. So you could do, you know, if you're trying to, if you're doing it for financial reasons, it can be too small too. But the biggest danger is sizing the system too large and not taking that, the net metering ruling into account and the fact that you're basically being penalized, that's the biggest, biggest piece of concern. Anybody have any other questions? No?
All right, and he asked me more, appreciate the, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good presentation.
Thank you. If you think of anything, pass it on to Eric. Eric, can I talk pretty regularly? And thank you, uh-
Thank you, Eric. That's a lot of work, a lot of research into this.
Lot of phone calls. Lot of phone calls. I don't know how many speeches I've made. Lot of them.
A lot, we did learn a lot through this, guys, we had both of us. Because everything's changing so much.
We have to.
Good. And we're gonna, yeah.
Thanks, Ray, back, so. Everyone appreciates it. We need all the power, or if not, we want it on the agenda next.
Question, I, I just have a feeling, are you, are, are we at the district?
Let's see, I'm sure.
You may be ready. Make sure you take care of the clusters. That's all right. Unless, unless delay doesn't mean it's a project.
That's what I'm thinking about it.
So Eric, I'm just gonna say, I mean, Eric's done a ton of research on this. We've always trusted him, he's always done a really great job here. Um, do you, I mean, what, what's your thoughts?
I think it's-
Do you think you're-
I think we're ready to save money, as I do, I think that's-
Do you think we're ready to move on as early as next month? Or do you think it needs to be set on, thought, thought about?
Well, I've been thinking about it for ten months.
I don't know.
And I was hoping we had the final parts from AEP, you know, the billing department, 'cause I mean, we've talked, you know, phone calls, all three of us together, over how our bills drive. And, you know, they're giving us recommendations, I contacted AEP and said, do you guys recommend solar fields? And I, I shared an email and they actually, AEP recommends putting a solar field in. They, they really do. I know, I thought it'd be surprising, I thought they would say, no, stay with us, you know, we'll, we'll lower the rate a little bit and, you know, we'll match their rate that they're proposing and they keep you. But no, they sent an email from their upper management, no, they highly recommend putting a solar field in for these schools. And, you know, that, that having eight cents per kilowatt locked in the next twenty-five years is a good point. Uh, I don't think if I ask any of you guys, do you think your kilowatts, you know, at your house, are gonna stay the same twenty years or fifteen years, or is it gonna go up or down? I think everyone's gonna think their electric rates are gonna go up. Uh, this is one way we can kind of maintain, you know, we, we own the kilowatts we use a year. They use it from budgeting wise on what our fix rate would be for lots of electricity for the building. I mean, for a decent school building, that wouldn't affect anything at the, you know, football field or bus barn or anything, but for, for here. And the one big one I asked months ago was, you know, if you guys, before I ever pursued this or spending more time on it, was, they've given up the ground for twenty-five years. And, 'cause I put countless hours and countless phone calls into this. Called fifty to a hundred references on, you know, different states, to really see what size system they put in, or again, what they, what they were expecting, what they logged up from, what kind of rate they were, they were putting in. I talked to more schools, I think they put one in, a little too small, uh, and one too big, so. Some of, some of, and some of the schools localize, never even got a second proposal by anyone else. They just went with the first one and signed a contract and off they went. And no research, no phone calls. I started talking to them and they, no research at all.
I think primarily to respond to Denny, I think a lot of us have been thinking about this for a while, at least I know that I have. And as a direction goes, as a school district, it seems to be the logical one, planning particularly, because we can see the numbers pretty far. I mean, they've given us a lot of numbers. But also efficiency-wise, we've already done everything we can. So this would be the next step in that direction and probably the only step right now that we need to make.
I talked with a couple of schools and they were gonna do PR. And I said, I really don't care what it looks like, I'm not a tree hugger, I don't care how many cars picks off the road, how many trees. I said, I really don't care. I really don't care.
You better not.
I don't care, I have pretty dear. I told them that, they'll eat you that too, so.
You, you are very real. Anything that we've talked about, you know, if you ever built a building, went down in that direction, or if you ever put in the field house, if we ever did something on the back for a bus area, you feel that all of that is safe and clear and-
If not, if you're gonna put a football field, you'd be out.
No, not a football field, just the bus.
Just academic, just busting, you know, stuff.
Yeah, we're fine. Our land is fine, alright.
See, that's my biggest concern is just the next week, 'cause you're brave here the next few years, so am I. Hopefully, he's around, you know? And it's like, in my-
You're not there, no.
Is that, I don't think we decided to add on or do something.
Yes.
I still think the field house is one of those opportunities we have here.
Yes, so do I, and that will not affect any of that, empty rooms or anything.
And the other good news with that is the solar field will be to the south of those buildings. So even though like a field house would be a taller building, we don't have to worry about the sun. Everything's geographically positioned correctly for the solar field to, to take advantage of where we live.
I honestly think, and I've talked with Keith on this before, was, you know, I honestly think if we're looking to, to put different athletic facilities and stuff here, I actually think it'd be smarter to go east, so, south. I mean, you'd be able to have everything right off the main parking lot and drive. And that'd make you a lot more parking for events like that, where you don't have to put in all the white cop and, you know, asphalt and everything else that you already have, that overflow parking lot here. We always run into issues at the, the football field and over parking. And to me, it'd make a lot more sense to do that, like with something like that, than what it'd be if you go behind the school.
Have we ever considered approaching that owner of that, uh?
I mean, you'll have discussed other kinds of approaches.
Mr. Buddy, you know, maybe not a bad idea to, I think Keith might be one of the best ones to talk about.
Okay.
I've spoken to John.
And I think it'd be smart to swear up the back end of a property, take a straight across towards the back side, or the south side of the woods, bring it up along by the creek, all the way up to state ground too.
I'm gonna clarify, it's been approximately a year ago, the last time I spoke to John, asking if you will.
I would just like to say, Eric, thank you. You have a great job. I, because we have talked about this, I've talked to people that are capital comments. And that was one of their questions, was how efficient is your, like, you know, have you done this? Have, you know, have you done an LED light? Yeah, we've already done that. Like, it was nice to be able to say, we have the best facilities, guy, our school is very efficient.
But actually, he didn't say, but he's given an idea for me. I've had some, some teachers complain about it, but if you go down to drinking fountain right now and you can't get any water on the drinking fountain, 'cause they got timers on all of them in the building, so they're not cycling the pump, E and B, so they shut off at six o'clock at night during the week and they're off all weekend. I actually had to come in on Saturday or two and go and have athletic director, or they had academic tournament here and we were scheduled for Saturday and had kids down here, so I came back, get it right and turn them home, the three on down, so they could get water in there.
That's why when I go to work at like four thirty-five in the morning, I'm freezing cold and I'm dehydrated.
Thank you, Eric. That's your story, that's your story, Mr. Flattery, stick to it.
That's, that's why your, uh, that's why your office is cooler, so that the war, the warrior.
I'm sorry, really, thank you for everything, yes.